Okay, now we're on to the discussion and action items for the evening. The first item, superintendent, do you want to introduce?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. The first item, the purpose of this item is to inform the board about the changes the school district has made to special education programs and services in order to continue to meet the needs of our students who have learning challenges while we continue to effectively manage our resources. And we have, I think we have Ms. Steele tonight.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to such a large audience this evening with many of our special education team members here and their esteemed colleagues in general education. I've presented to the board before in the past about the changes that we made to how we offer services in special education. I've presented to the board more recently on the creation of a preschool program. So I'm just going to do a brief overview and talk about what our plans are in terms of for next steps. But I just want to, for the benefit of folks that hadn't been here at a previous presentation, is the district made an effort to focus on creation of inclusive, accessible, and equitable learning environments for all students by using a learning center model where any student who needed access to specialized academic intervention services or remediation services could go to the learning center for those supports and services, and that would be students with or without disabilities. And so we established a learning center at the high school, and we also established a learning center at the elementary middle school at Anna Yates. And this year, earlier this year, we established a learning center model here at the district office in partnership with the YMCA, who operates state preschool and Head Start. In terms of that particular model, it's a little bit different at each of the sites, depending on the student needs and depending on the staffing as well. But as I've mentioned to the board previously, at the high school setting, we've got education specialists assigned to the math strand and the English strand, and they support the students in the general education classroom where the core content instruction is provided by the general education core content specialist. There is a learning center where education specialists may pull student groups into the learning center for typically pre-teaching or reteaching, also for the period zero, which is a curriculum and support period, where students get assistance in terms of planning and organizing their school materials, planning for projects, planning for tests, organizing how they're going to study. There's also sessions during each month that are focused on college and career planning to ensure that students are aware of what their interests are, aware of how to work towards specific kinds of employment, as well as how to access a college environment that is of interest to them. At Anna Yates Elementary School, it's a similar model for the middle school students, but there's a greater emphasis on pulling students out to provide a lot of pre-teaching, reteaching, building vocabulary, and a lot more of the special education support is provided in the general education classroom. So the biggest change has been to focus on core content instruction being provided by the general education specialist in that particular area, and then providing student support in that classroom, as well as providing skill instruction in the learning center. At the preschool this year, we have students who are attending most of their day in the Head Start classroom, involved in some amazing activities, and a simulating learning environment, and a portion of their school day, they go to a learning center as well, and they work with an education specialist, a speech therapist, or occupational therapist, either individually or in small groups, but again, spend the majority of their day with their same-age peers accessing core content instruction. In terms of how many kids we're serving in the preschool, in the past, we have sent our students to other school districts. We have transported them to Berkeley or Albany, and these are four- and five-year-olds being transported to another district. This year, we were able to serve all of the students that were identified as eligible and needing special education services here in this building. We ended up serving a total of six students here, and in the past, those would have been six students that we would have sent someplace else. We had three students who continued to finish out their preschool year at Albany because they'd already started the year there before we started our program. But the plan is for next year, all of those students to return to their home community and be educated with their neighbors, their peers, in their home community, and grow up in the elementary school and middle school and high school that's available for them here in Emory Unified. I mentioned that we had six preschool students this year. At Anna Yates, we serve 48 students in terms of that have IEPs in the learning center. But the other thing that I mentioned in the very beginning is not only do we serve students who have learning challenges identified as disabilities, but we also provide intervention services to any student who needs them. And I see many of the gen ed teachers in this classroom that recognize that maybe two students go out of their class that have an IEP to work with one of the education specialists, but maybe another three students who don't have IEPs also go to the learning center to receive instruction in possibly reading, or math, or written expression. So at Anna Yates Elementary Middle School, the K8 site, we serve 48 special education students and 55 general education students. So we serve well over 100 students with the four staff members that we have providing those intervention services. And they're very creative in terms of how they do that, but at the same time, they've got terrific relationships with their colleagues in the general education classroom, supported by the board with collaboration funds that allows every week, one day to be set aside with a roving sub, so that those teachers can collaborate in terms of what's coming up in the next week with regards to curriculum, which students need help in particular areas, what modifications need to be done, et cetera. At the high school, we have a smaller caseload in terms of the number of students with disabilities that are served there. We have 14 students. In the past, we've had anywhere from 20 to 25, so there are fewer students at the high school receiving services through the learning center. It's likely due to one particular reason. It might be certainly to declining enrollment, but one of the things that we know is a number of our students that come to our district are here on inter-district transfer. And when we move to a learning center model, that is a full inclusion model, meaning the students are first and foremost in a general education classroom. Many of the students that come from other districts have an IEP that indicates they need to spend most of their day in a restricted setting, a secluded setting, that's typically called a special day class, or oftentimes, they need to be in a special math class or a special English class. We don't have that design at our high school. We typically modify and collaborate with the gen ed teacher in terms of how we do provide access to the core content instruction. At Emory Secondary, general education students also have access to intervention services, and how that's typically done is the education specialist may be in the general education classroom. In consultation with the gen ed teacher, they might divide the students up into certain groups, or split the class, or students that have similar challenges with certain topics or skills may go to the learning center with students that have IEPs as well. And so again, it's a very fluid program at the high school, more dependent in terms of what's going on in the particular classroom and coming up with the next unit. Where Anna Yates, we actually created intervention groups. Students were invited to join those groups for a certain period of time so that we could evaluate progress, and so that was more mirrored off of some type of intervention model, not specifically RTI, but particularly off that model. Just briefly, in terms of fiscal impact, I mentioned about costing, about sending students to other school districts to provide the special education services. Being able to provide our own services allows us not only to keep our students in their home community with their neighborhood peers, but also, it allows us to provide that instruction ourself without having to pay another district to do that, and also without having to pay the cost of transportation to go to another district. So having that preschool program here, I think, has been a terrific benefit to our community, but also, fiscally, will benefit the district as well. Also, the education specialist providing intervention services allows us to continue with remediation efforts or tutoring efforts for students that need those particular services. In terms of next steps, I mentioned previously that we had students that were attending Albany. These are students with more moderate needs or intense needs than the district in the past has served. Because we have such a creative team and partnership in our school community, we are actually bringing those students back to our home district. So students that have more needs due to disabilities like intellectual deficits, or autism, or emotional disturbance, those students will be served at Anna Yates. So we're creating cohorts within grade levels so that staff can actually support them in the learning center and in the general education classroom. So that's our plan for next year, is to focus on a small group of kinder students, as well as a couple of our eighth-grade students moving on to high school, have more significant needs for modification of the curriculum. In the past, they typically would have gone to a special day class and received the majority of their instruction in that class, and we're staying with the inclusion model, where we're going to be making the modifications in that particular classroom and using the learning center as well. At this time, since we've got so many people in the audience, I'm sorry that a few of them left, I'd just like to note that two of the things that we're going to continue to need to do is, one, continue to provide that collaboration time. It's critical for the general education teacher and the special education teacher to be planning together and to make those changes together and to support each other. And the other piece is, we're going to continue to need, we're going to need to offer and continue to offer training in differentiating instructions so that our general education colleagues understand how to help students with learning challenges, whether they have an IEP or not, and that we're there to support them on an ongoing basis with professional development and not just one time or every now and then. But I'd like to acknowledge that the reason that we can do all this is we have an amazing team. We really have an amazing team in special education, and I'd like to acknowledge that some of them are in the audience. We have learning specialists at Anna Yates. Alona Rhodes, who has been the queen of intervention for our primary grades, and I think many of the primary teachers have appreciated the fact that she has single-handedly provided intervention services to more than 38 kids in general education. We also have Michelle Peskovic, who not only provides services at Anna Yates, she actually extended her credential authorization to teach in preschool, and she has a split placement and starts her day off over here in preschool, and then finishes her day over at Anna Yates. And next year, she'll do that again in partnership with Ms. Rhodes, who will be focusing on the K2 strand. We have Leslie Epstein and Karen Sukennick with our intermediate and middle school students, and just like to acknowledge that Karen Sukennick is going to be working very hard to ensure that our eighth graders that are moving up to ninth grade have adequate support and, not just adequate support, but training with, providing training to the high school teachers, the general education teachers, so that they can understand how to best support the students that are coming to their programs as well. At the high school, we have Mr. Ross Benbrook. I know he's not here this evening, but he started with us this year, and he continues to be creative in determining how to best serve our students in the math strand. We also have Alura McGilvery, our speech therapist, Lauren LaPlante, our school psychologist, and Lynn Perkins, our school nurse, who have worked very hard this last few weeks to ensure that parents are comfortable with the plans that we make for their students, with their input, and feel secure in the plans that we have moving forward despite some of the concerns that have been shared this evening. It's a challenge to convince parents that you believe you have an effective program moving forward when they're hearing, you know, about cuts and changes in the district. So I appreciate those of you that have been committed to the students that you're working with, and I would open this to any questions that board members might have at this time.
Do we have any clarifying questions from board members?
I remember at this time last year, we talked about splitting, or maybe it was a little later in the summer, we talked about splitting the responsibilities of the teachers at the elementary school between general ed and special ed. And I'm just wondering if we're tracking outcomes as well as just student counts? I mean, our numbers are historically, are typically low in our identification of students, and I'm just wondering if we're preventing, you know, the purpose of a good RTI program is to keep kids off of IEPs and 504s, and so I'm just wondering if we're tracking that data as well and what it looks like.
I'm not sure that I can respond fully to that question, because we actually don't operate a formal RTI program. It's definitely one of the things the district has been interested in doing for quite some time now. We do provide intervention services. We do use school-wide data resulting from DIBELS, as well as the statewide test to identify students who are in need of intervention services. The interventionists who work with those particular students do collect data, but it's not as formal as bringing it back to teams, looking at, do we need to repeat the student in an intervention program for a specified number of days, weeks, et cetera? We don't have anything that sophisticated. We certainly would like to, but what we are doing is we do collect data on the students that we're working within those groups. I mentioned the collaboration sessions. We have some of those teachers in the audience, where those students who come into those intervention groups on a weekly basis, the interventionist, which is the special education teacher, and the general education teacher talk about those students. You can see him nodding, because I require collaboration summaries, so the education specialists actually write up, you know, what the progress has been for those students, what the concern has been, and then what the continuation plan is for those students with regards to intervention services. So, but collecting actual data on how effective the program is, school-wide, we don't have that data. We have it individually per student.
Okay. Thank you.
You, yeah, how many special ed students do we have, approximately?
So our numbers, the last three years, have been relatively stable, despite the fact that we've had changes in our overall enrollment. We typically hover around 62 to 65 students. We are identifying about eight and a half percent of our student population in our SELPA, where there's four other school districts in ourselves. Typically, those districts are around 10 or 11 percent, which is consistent with the state. We aren't under-identifying, according to the Department of Education, but we are a little bit lower than some of our other districts, so we are certainly not over-identifying.
And how many students are we sending off to other districts to receive their services?
That's a great question. This year, we have six students in out-of-district placements. Last year, we had 10. Next year, we'll have three. That could change at any time. And the reason why that changes is because we're creating programs for those students to stay locally. But what has happened in the past is we'll have a student that comes to our district that has a need, and three years ago, we didn't think we could serve students with those kinds of needs, because we were kind of locked into a different kind of model. But what's happened, as I reported to the board before, is other districts no longer have those spaces available, and that has really forced us to be more creative in terms of developing programs for our students. So I, we have had students in non-public schools in the past. We have not had any students in non-public schools this year.
Did those 62 include preschool?
Yeah, so the breakdown, we have, in terms of the preschool, we have 14 students at the secondary program. We have 48 at the elementary and preschool program.
Okay, so the 48 was inclusive?
Yeah, yeah.
What does it cost us to send a child to the YMCA program?
Well, that's a great question. Zero.
Oh, so it's nothing?
Zero dollars. We have an MOU with the YMCA that operates that program that acknowledges that they will set aside at least 10 percent of their student spaces for enrollment of students with disabilities. We have no extra costs with regards to instruction, because we're using our currently existing staff. I mentioned earlier, one of our teachers teaches in the preschool, as well as at Anna Yates, our speech therapist, and our school psychologist, and our OT that we already have on staff, come over from Anna Yates or Emory Secondary and provide those services. We did have to add, I shouldn't say we had to, we added a two-hour aide every day, so that when the students are in the Head Start classroom, they have additional support. And that was primarily, we had one student that has more intensive needs due to pretty serious autism.
So does the Y then just bill the state directly for the preschool cost, or?
Well, the state preschool dollars actually flow through us, and I believe they might be giving a presentation later tonight and maybe could address that question as well. I am certainly not the expert in that area, but I do want to comment that they have been a great agency to partner with. We have been able to fully integrate any student that we had with learning challenges. They've welcomed us into their classroom. We share space, share materials, we cross-train, and all of those are to the benefit of the students and their parents, who actually can walk their children to preschool now instead of having to wait for a taxi to pick them up to take them someplace else.
Thank you.
You mentioned the, oh, actually, before I get to that, the evidence of achievement or improvement, what is the evidence indicating? And can we get, you know, more school-wide, district-wide data on this? Is it the SBAK?
I think we can, but certainly-
What's the barrier to not have?
So certainly, all of our students are general education students first, so they have, we have assessment information on all students with special education needs as we would with a general education student. So in the past, they've had the CST assessment score, so they have state test assessment data. They also have school-wide assessment data. So all the students are getting the DIBELS. We've also done the teacher-made test, the monthly test, so we have academic data from those assessment measures. One of the things that we don't currently do, and we could do, is to be looking at subgroups. One of the things that happens from CDEs, because we're such a small district and we have such a small subgroup of special education students, they don't typically send us data on that group, but that's not, doesn't mean that we can't be looking collectively at that data and making decisions as a whole based on data. In the past, we've done surveys of students, parents, and teachers with regards to the learning center and the support and the progress that the students are making, so for qualitative data. And then each of the students with IEPs all have individual assessments and progress reports. So every student generates data with regards to how they're improving based on individual goals. Oftentimes, we do assessments that talk about not only the skills that they've learned, but the grade level equivalence that they've gained during each year that they receive services. So we have all of that data on students. And I can say, yes, all of our students are progressing, because when they're not, then we have, we reconvene and we take a look at each other and we ask, why not? What do we need to do differently? And I have not been at an IEP meeting where we're not making progress. I have been at a couple IEP meetings over the last three years where students had needs for more intensive services all day long that we didn't offer in this district, but that was offered in their homeschool district, and a couple students returned to a homeschool district in order to access a different kind of program to meet their needs.
Okay, well, I would appreciate that, and I would understand where we don't currently give the CSTs. We now just gave the baseline, Smarter Balance assessments, so maybe we'll be getting more data, but it also seems we need to be more systematically giving formative assessments district-wide, and this is a student population we need to be tracking closely.
Absolutely. We need to ensure that we're doing the right thing, that the model that we have is working for our students.
Right, so to the extent that you can, you know, improve our analysis, tracking, reporting, assessment of how our kids are doing, I think the board would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
You mentioned the collaboration time?
Yes.
Is that currently working well, in your opinion, of the ability of the special ed teachers to collaborate with the grade-level regular ed teachers? And, you know, are there adjustments, if any, that need to be made in the master schedule to make that work better, or it's working fine?
Yes, to all of those questions that you just posed at one time. Personally, I believe it's a critical service that we need to provide in order, if we're asking general education teachers to modify instruction and provide support and accommodations for kids who learn differently, we need to help them do that. And we need to do that in a number of ways, but one of the ways that we do that is that we ensure that the student, the teacher of each of those students has ample time to plan together with regards to how they're going to adjust that instruction. So I mentioned before, at Anna Yates, we have a roving sub once a week, and there's a schedule put together, and the roving sub goes from gen ed classroom to gen ed classroom, releasing a general education teacher who then meets with the special education teacher, and oftentimes, other staff join that meeting as well. There might be the school counselor, the school psychologist, the EL teacher. They all have ideas with regards to how to address the needs of students in that particular classroom. That's weekly at Anna Yates. At ESS, it's a little bit different, and I'll say to you that it hasn't been consistent, and I don't know that that's a bad thing. There's certainly some ESS teachers here who may want to comment on that later. At ESS, we actually ask teachers to give up a prep period, and we pay them for that. So it's a voluntary collaboration time, and they meet typically, two years ago, we were meeting an hour a week with English teacher and an hour a week with the math teacher. Depending on the relationship that they have and how they do their planning, I know this year, there's been a lot more planning that's been done outside of paid collaboration time. I don't know that that's bad, so I know collaboration is still going on. There's also been, in terms of one of our strands, we were not fully staffed the full year, so some of that collaboration time was not going on. But in the past, we have had regular weekly collaboration at ESS between the special education teacher and the general education teacher. Our plan is to do that again next year, meaning to set aside those collaboration funds. It costs about $6,000 at Anna Yates to have a roving sub every Wednesday all year long. And I think we spent maybe $2,500 at ESS for two special education teachers to collaborate with the English and math teachers over the last two years, not one year, but two years.
Okay.
Anything else?
Any other clarifying questions from the board? All right, we're going to open this up to public comment. Any public comment on this item?
Thank you.
Audrey Miles, Anna Yates. Thank you, Ms. Steele. I would say that I am definitely a recipient of your wonderful staff. My class was a kindergarten class with a large percentage of students who had needs this year. I meet with Ms. Rhodes weekly. Those meetings are very effective. We plan both the intervention, we keep track of the daily formative assessments, and what we call exit tickets for those students, which is a daily assessment that we do, as well, when problems occur, there's an immediate response. She has a pull-in and a pull-out. She pulls so many students per day, two times a day, so that there's a cohesive group of students that meet daily, okay? And that has been very effective. When you talk about the data, I just got my DIBELS. Out of my 18 students, 16 are benchmarked, and we have two intensive that still need some assistance, but those students are also TKs and are repeating, not repeating, but will do the two-year kindergarten, so that's one reason, and one is a second language learner that we need to watch clearly next year. I would say that I would not have been as successful without my partner, Ms. Rhodes, and without the special ed department, because this year has been very challenging for me. It's been a long year, and I really appreciate the special education department, all of you that are here, Ms. Perkins, and I'm so tired, I can't even, I'm looking right at you, I can't think of your name. Say your name out loud. And so, yeah, and it's very tearful for me, because several of the students were students who came in at kindergarten during the summer, and they were definitely identified, and they came into my room with an IEP, and there were some very serious concerns about how we were going to effectively service these students, and these are our students who are benchmarked and have, are ready for first grade, and that I'm very proud of. Thank you.
Nice work, Ms. Miles. Ms. Lewis? Ms. Lewis.
Good evening, board members. I'm Tracy Lewis. I teach second grade at Anna Yates. And I have been working with the special ed department for quite some time. Our collaborations are vital. They're very, very vital. That's the place where we bring the information, we can discuss, we can talk, we can create new ideas and try different things, try different arrangements. Just to give you an idea of student progress, I had about nine students a couple of years ago who needed either some type of intervention, either they were unidentified, through collaborating and working together with the teachers and the special ed teachers or the, I'm sorry, the learning specialists. Those students, after two years of work, were proficient in English and language arts. I don't necessarily look at how well my students do when they are with me, but I'm tracking how they do when they leave me. And that they are staying proficient, if they are staying at advanced, and some of them were at advanced for fourth grade and they were proficient. Many of them achieved that proficiency in third grade. Because of the interventions and the collaborations that we did and the rotation, because we do believe in the less, the least restrictive. So some weeks, they had a few weeks of intervention and then they would have a few weeks in the general ed classroom. And the ones who needed, we were able to cycle through and make sure that the students who really needed the intervention really got them at the point in which they needed them, because they didn't always need them for math, sometimes they needed them for reading. And it went both ways for different kids. So we really look at meeting the needs of the students at the time in which they need the needs and also for the skills. So I'm looking at how those students are doing and they are in fifth, sixth grade now. Fifth and sixth grade. So if, the fact that they are still meeting proficient on state exams, that's your evidence. We do look at data. It is a very, very critical part to the program. Some time ago, I came to the board and expressed my concern about our students who do not score low enough to qualify for special ed and they don't score high enough to be proficient. Those are the students who are cycling in and out of these discussions. And so we're meeting their needs and it does, and for some of them, it takes them a year, maybe two years, to reach that proficiency. But our goal is that they reach advanced. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Weiner, I got two things to comment on this special ed. First, working on the master schedule, we are going to still have our preps aligned for the, I know it's the math teachers. I work with the advanced students, I don't tend to work with that group as much in that regard, but the preps will be aligned so that they continue collaboration, because that has been working very well. The second thing is my concern with identifying students as the SST coordinator, 504 coordinator. We've had a lot of recent SSTs and 504s where we've actually identified a student for 504 coming up. Hopefully, they, we can get it put into place next year, but that's been with the district for the last four years. And this is really concerning. And one of the problems is that with our current understaffing is we can, as I am still a teacher, it's hard to run these 504s and meetings as much as necessary for all the students that could actually benefit from it. So there needs to be more support in allowing there to be more flexibility of when SSTs and 504s can be held instead of once or twice a week, and which doesn't always work with other stakeholders, including principals, counselors, psychologists and our wellness center who have other obligations. So we're having a lot of difficulty servicing all the students that actually need it. And it's very scary when you find out a student has a medical condition that should have been getting a 504 accommodation three weeks before the end of the school year. That's really a disservice. So we need to find a way to get more awareness and be able to address these concerns earlier.
Just to make sure I understand the scheduling issue, is it that the, there are set times, like one or two set times during the week and that's the time for 504 and that's it?
I can only hold an SST?
Hold on, let me just, or are you saying there's only enough staffing to do it once or twice a week and we need to be doing? It's not that there's set time?
So there is set times because I still have a class schedule to teach and then I run the SSTs during one of my prep times. So one of my additional prep times is used for attending SST meetings, also attending cost meetings and collaborative meetings like of that nature and planning the PBIS. And since I'm only available during that time to run these meetings, that limits when the meetings can be held and how many we can hold a week. And since other staff are often in conflict with those times, so there needs to be more staff running those meetings because that position's not going to be there next year.
Got it. Thank you.
I'm Mrs. Cosby and I'm speaking again on the special ed situation. As I said earlier, I have two grandsons that will be attending secondary school. And they both are autism. One is on this end of the spectrum and the other is on the other end. The fact that I already know what I'm hearing now, that they are greatly understaffed to do the things that need to be done. And I would like to see something in place at Anna Yates. Because when they decide to have a learning center and with parents like myself and others steady coming to the board, asking for what would need to be done and observing what was going on at the school and coming here and saying what was happening. Anna Yates have really shaped into a beautiful learning center. I can't say enough for Ms. Rose. I can never say enough for that lady. She is one heck of a special ed teacher and she works from her heart. She has nothing but the best for every student in her heart. And that's, she done it for my other grandson that needed it. And this student kid that came in two years ago, three years ago, whichever, she's beautiful. She works from the heart as well with the students. And collaboration that they have set up in place where they have not voluntarily, mandatory. And I think that needs to be that at the secondary school as well. Because if I'm doing something where maybe I don't feel like doing it just because I don't feel like doing it, then I'm able to do that because it's all the voluntary. It need to be mandatory because everyone needs to be in place. Unless someone is sick or something like that, it's forced to give away for that. But it need to be in place for those students, for them to discuss what needs for each and every week. And as the teachers that came up here spoke, you heard how well it has worked for them. And so this need to be in place because my grandson is fine, he'll be going for his diploma. But the other would have to be given a certificate of completion because there's no way that he will be able to give his diploma. Not cutting my grandchild short, but I know what he's capable of doing. And that's because of teachers that they, that he had, myself talking with them, my daughter talking with them, that all this has taken place. And we need this in place for the secondary school as well. It's very understaffed, so we do need more staff members to help bring this about. And if anyone gets stuck, go take a look at Anna Yates, see how well they're doing. Get some encouragement from some of the teachers there that's going through it now. You know, it can be shaky for anyone when they first start out, not knowing what would be happening, working with these students. Some teachers not saying anything about them or cutting them short, but that's just the way it results. If you, most people are scared of something that they have never been exposed to. And they're not going to do their best until they can feel comfortable and know that it's all right to make a mistake. Because the average parent know there are going to be some mistakes when they're first starting out. What a parent dislike is a hateful, mean person that's not doing the best for their child. That's where the problem comes in there. We went through a lot of mistakes with Anna Yates first start. But we worked together. All the teachers, especially the teachers, was loving their heart. We met, we talked, they had respect for the parents and that made a great difference. So we do need more teachers. We also need teachers that are not aware they need to have the training. That's very important for them to have the training. And I'm praying for us all that the secondary can do for my grandkids what Anna Yates does. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cosby. Any other public comment on this item? Ms. Williams-Moore, you're leaving, you're not making public comment. We understand you have to do homework. Thank you for coming. Double checking, any other public comment on this item? Any further board comment or discussion? This was a discussion item. Thank you, Ms. Steele, for your presentation. Superintendent, you want to introduce the next item?
Sure, thank you very much. Good evening again, everyone. Tonight, we have Ms. Pam Shaw here with us tonight to give us some information about the YMCA and our program here at the district's office. Thank you, Ms. Shaw.
I need to use the microphone, I'm sorry. So maybe one of, just using this then. Thank you. Hi, thank you. This is my annual, usually a dog and pony show to just tell you where we're at, what we're doing. And it's funny because as I was putting the presentation together, I put nothing about the partnership with special ed, knowing that Dr. Steele was going to be presenting, but it's such, and it's just part of who we are right now. We have integrated the children with disabilities, with IEPs into the program as though they're there, that they're always there. And the special ed teaching staff, the speech therapists, psychologists, everybody is just part of the team and works closely with our team to make it work. And we're loving it and we hope we'll be able to continue it forever. So we're very excited about it. I'm going to give you a little bit of information about our program and what we're doing and what we're up to and where we're headed. So demographically, we're serving 44 preschool children and 16 toddlers. Toddlers are about 10 months to three years of age. 57% of the preschoolers are Emeryville or 94608 Oakland residents and 38% of the toddlers. Part of that is the toddler classes new this year and there were some kids that were slated to come here and hopefully, in future years, it'll be a higher and higher percentage of Emeryville residents. We are serving Emeryville children at our other centers in Berkeley. Five pregnant women with brand-new babies are served in our home-based model. And they are slated to come into a new classroom that's starting here in the fall for babies. 12 infants and toddlers and 19 preschool children, and these are all served by either ourselves or Berkeley Unified through a contract with us. Demographically, we're about 59% African-American, 24 Latino, 9% Asian, 7% white, 2% biracial. It's a nice diverse group of kids and families. Languages spoken, about 36% speak a language other than English, with Spanish being the primary language, followed by Punjabi and Arabic. Our staff reflect the demographics of the kids and families and speak those languages as well. We're serving three foster children, three homeless families. Seven of the children have IEPs or IFSPs. Parent education levels, we look at parent ed levels because when you're looking at preschool and you're looking at outcomes for children, we clearly look at where our parents are coming from. And 14% are less than high school educated. That's a fairly high amount. And we look closely at that because we want to make sure that those kids get what they need and the parents get the ability to work with their kids at home because we only have them for part of the day and that's, you know, even if they're here all day long through childcare, they still need support at home. 42% have high school or GEDs, 32% some college or advanced training, 11% with a BA and one parent has an advanced degree. Each year, we do an evaluation through both Head Start and our state funding. We do an early childhood environmental rating scale, looking at the physical environment. We use a tool called CLASS, which assesses classroom interactions between adults and children. We look at desired results as our child assessment tool that the state requires, and I'll give you some information about that. We conduct a family survey and we develop quality improvement plans based on this. And then we report it to the state every year and they tell us how great we're doing, or we tell them how great we're doing. The areas of focus are five major areas of development, I'm just going to skip through that. One of the things we do is every year, we set target goals for our children to see where they're at in terms of school readiness. So these are the four-year-olds going into kindergarten or TK in the fall. And they're broken down, we select seven, eight, six target areas each year that we look at in all areas of development. We look at a fall baseline, we do a mid-year assessment and then a spring assessment. You know, we were surprised this year by how low the scores were both starting and how high they were towards the end of the year, but they're not where we want them to be this year. Usually, we like seeing the spring assessments in the 90 percentiles or above that even. And what happened this year is the kids started so much lower in the fall. We don't usually see kids coming in with no conflict negotiation skills. And what it says to us is a lot of these kids were not in preschool before, this is their first year of preschool, they've not been with other children. Or they speak a language other than English and they're transitioning into English. But to have zeros for letter and word knowledge and for conflict negotiation, that's pretty low to start the school year off with. And so we look at that and we see these children have made massive progress during the course of this year. And hopefully, many of these kids will be with us through the summer so that by fall, they'll be really ready for kindergarten.
Can you explain those numbers? I'm sorry.
Sure.
So what does a 10% on the baseline represent?
So 10% of the children, of the four-year-olds that will be going to kindergarten in the fall, scored at like the highest levels. So what we would consider like passing levels for impulse control, which is a targeted item on the assessment tool. Looking at how children can sit, can share, can do certain things.
So 10% of your students?
10% of the students when they came in in the fall and 72% by the end of the year of the four-year-olds.
And this is coming off the DRDP?
Yes. Same thing for conflict negotiation, concepts about print, letter-word knowledge, problem-solving, classification, personal care routines. The teachers do the assessment. It's based on observation and communication with the parents. So the center director was going to be here, but her daughter's graduating Berkeley High this week and there's lots of activities going on and she couldn't be here. But the staff do what's called a project approach with the children. So in addition to the regular curriculum, it's, there are some special project things based on what children really like and they kind of draw the line. So this was in the toddler classroom, they were doing a paper project. And this is how the teachers introduced all concepts about paper. And, you know, I wish she were here to explain better what was happening because it looks just like they're playing in snow. But when you start talking about the shapes and the sizes and the colors and the textures of different types of paper, these are kids that are a year and a half old and are learning the languages around that and words and vocabulary and concepts around it. They're doing garden project. I don't know if you've been outside to see the playground. We have a brand-new, beautiful playground that was funded by both state, local first five dollars and federal dollars. And we band-aided a playground that is just gorgeous outside. And the kids are planting their own garden. We've got some special garden funds in addition to that through City Slicker Farms that came out and does work with the kids. And their fruit and vegetables were kind of awesome. Their tomatoes were just killer too this year. And now they're planting flowers. Kids learn very young to start writing and to use paper and pen in their classroom. The four-year-olds, you know, the preschoolers sign in themselves. The parents have to sign in and then there's a separate sign-in sheet for the preschoolers to do, so they're learning how to write their names and sign in and identify themselves, starting with the youngest kids, actually. And then they do cooking projects in the classroom. We have our little cowboy dress up that day, I guess. But I don't know what they were making. It looks like something with tortillas, I think, was what it wound up with. On the family survey, 99% of the families were satisfied or very satisfied with the program and we know who that other 1% was and we're dealing with them. So the only concerns and comments that they made were, you know, every parent of a different language wants somebody in their classroom who speaks a language of the children. That's the ideal situation and if we could hire people who are trilingual, quadrilingual, we'd love it. And they want longer hours of operation, which we're actually doing in the fall, we're extending the hours. Right now, we're open from like 8:30 to 4:30 and in the fall, we'll be here from 7:30 to 5:00. Yay for the parents, sad for the staff. What the future holds, this is the first- What the future holds, this is the first year that I can report that our federal and state funding is stable. And not only is it stable, we got new money this year. Early childhood is very lucky, both in the state and federal budgets, and we hope it'll stay. There's a bill pending on the governor's desk right now to expand state preschool and we hope that we will be able to expand those services. We will be adding an infant classroom, starting in the fall, with eight children from birth to, I think the oldest in that room is slated to be about eight months old. And these will come right out of our pregnant moms program and the priority will be for Emeryville nine four six oh eight residents. We will continue participation in what's called the Quality Improvement and Rating System. And this is a system that outside assessors come in and evaluate our program based on all of those things that we evaluate ourself on. We scored fours in this center, which is, the highest score you can get is a five. And, and the four is like the highest, there's only three programs in the county at that point in time that we were assessed that scored fours and we were one of them. So we're very proud of the work that our staff is doing out here. They're really quite amazing. And we hope to coordinate more with-
I'm sorry, can, can you give me that?
The rating system is a one-to-five rating system. We scored fours. And it's based on teacher qualifications, center director qualifications, class scores, looking at adult-child interactions, the environmental rating scale scores, health and safety inspections. There's a whole slew of things and they rank each one.
Including your outcome scores, as it were?
Including our child outcome scores and how we work with special education students, all of those things.
And how many, you said you were one of three?
One of three programs in the county when we were assessed that scored at that level. Out of twenty-something programs that were assessed. And now, we're going through, we finished the pilot program, we were one of the twenty-four pilot sites in the county and now we're going on to just being a regular program now. So we've had two years of quality rating and improvement system for this site. As a result of scoring at the level four, it means that for each state preschool student enrolled in this program, we are getting an additional six hundred and eighty dollars per child that we can spend almost any way we want to. And I've chosen to give it to staff because we don't have annual COLAs and they really work hard and so we're looking at giving stipends to all of the staff people. So-
Do you know if ECDC was included in the?
They weren't in the pilot. And I don't know, they have a small state preschool program and I don't know if they're participating yet. They've had some administrative turnover and I think once things settle down there, they will participate because it's in their best interest to do so.
Okay, thanks.
So, and we hope to develop a birth-to-five plan that's in permanence for the center in the site here. We will continue to work with special education and we're also looking at a birth, an infant development program for infants with disabilities so that we can catch them before they even hit preschool, so that there's a birth-to-five system in place here that serves Emeryville families where they are, rather than having to go to Oakland or Berkeley or even further away to get the services that they need. So it's exciting. And that's Ariana with the toddlers. Ariana is a UC Berkeley student who has been a volunteer here all year. She's a social welfare major, she speaks Spanish and she's been volunteering here, I think, four days a week for the entire school year. So, and she's actually subbing for us this summer as a paid substitute, so we're kind of excited. So any questions or comments?
I have the same question that I asked earlier is, what is the cost to our parents or how do we, are we able to place kids with special needs for free at your program?
Yes. So we have Head Start funds, federal preschool dollars, and we have state preschool dollars as well for all of the kids' birth-to-five. And so there's no charge to parents for the child development piece of the day. If parents stay and need childcare, it's based on their income and family size. So there may be fees associated in the afternoon part of the day, not during the special, any time in the morning when special ed kids would be here.
Okay.
So there's no fees for families unless they choose to use the extended-day childcare and then it would be based on their family size and income.
Right. So they don't have to apply for the Head Start program or anything, they can just be enrolled directly? I'm sorry.
We enroll them simultaneously in all the programs. It's, it's a try and triple enrollment for the children with IEPs.
And if parents don't qualify at the income levels for the Head Start?
For Head Start, it's not an issue because we can take ten percent over income. It's an issue with state preschool if they're over income with that, we serve them anyway. We just enroll them in Head Start and the Head Start will pay their fees.
I'm sorry, what do you mean by ten percent over income?
So Head Start, the income limitations are federal poverty, so that's like twenty-three thousand for a family of four.
Right.
So we can take ten percent over income. So ten percent of our total enrollment, we have four hundred kids, so forty kids can be served at any income level and those slots are reserved for children with IEPs or IFSPs.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Four hundred is, is-
Is our total number at five centers that we directly operate and three that we contract with Berkeley Unified.
Right. So the scores of four and the class scores, are those at this site?
That's just for this site.
Okay.
Yes. Although all of our centers scored fours or fives.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I thought nobody scored-
We work hard. Nobody scored five in the pilot, but we just got assessed for this year in the first year of the regular program. And we had two centers, infant centers actually, that scored fives. It's pretty cool.
Do you have, is there a demand to expand at this site?
Yes.
And, and-
Particularly from people who live in Oakland.
Uh-huh.
So-
Is there a space constraint to do so?
Yeah. I mean, I could talk about what my fantasy is for this center, but I don't know that you're ready to hear it.
You're here, might as well.
So when, I think it goes back several superintendents ago that we started a discussion about birth-to-five in Emeryville and created a plan that would turn this center into a birth-to-five home for the city of Emeryville. And, and so that's my plan, hopes and dreams for this site, that once the district offices move out, that this becomes a birth-to-five center that provides parent education, training, support, everything that families need, community college classes and early childhood and literacy, second language kinds of work, continues to work with special education and early intervention programs, provides health services here. At one of our other centers that's large, we have Carrie's Kids, which is a health program, volunteers through Children's Hospital for homeless and under, under insured families. So once a month, they come out and do dental exams, vision exams, physical exams, immunizations, and it's for kids under eighteen. So we're hoping that we can bring Carrie's Kids here as well and offer those kinds of services for children, families in the community that need it. So.
Well, it's an exciting vision. Thank you for sharing it.
You may make it a reality anytime you like.
All right. Well, let's, let's keep talking.
Okay. I'll be back anytime. Thank you so much.
Oh, there was, I've heard, I've heard some rumor about, I think it's more in the rumor, there's some neighbors who are, who are upset about noise complaints. Can you tell us what, what the issue is and how you've responded to it?
There are some neighbors here that don't like children, it seems. Yeah.
I can expand on it too, if you'd like.
Please.
Michelle, you can correct me if, if President Apple, if you don't mind.
Sure, go ahead.
Because I've been talking with him lately as well.
Yeah, maybe you have more direct information.
Well, we may have the same information. I, I think Michelle's been dealing with him longer than I have. We have some neighbors directly behind the playground area who happen to work from home. And I think that they're finding that the fact that they happen to rent a place that is directly off of a child's, children playground, playground for children is, is difficult for them. They have asked at different times that, you know, do the students always have to be on this end? Can't they sometimes be on that end? And so I have agreed to allow them to contact me so we can assess how things are going when they feel like the noise level is high. And I recently was in contact with one of them who said, "Do you hear how loud that is?" And I did alert them to the fact that the children were all the way down the other end. And they said, "Oh, I guess that theory just went out the window." So I said, you know, I, I think, my understanding of Michelle's program that we have is that the kids are in different places along the back area, not just in one area, but I think that it's, it's proven to be difficult for some of the residents who happen to work from home.
And we have actually requested to meet with them and to look at our schedules so that we can adjust our schedules if there's critical times during the day that noise is really a critical factor. I know some of these people are musicians and it really disturbs them, the noise level. We've invited them to come in and do music with the kids, which some of them have over the last year. But they'd rather go to the superintendent than talk to us directly, I think, these days or maybe, you know, other ways. But we would love to, you know, meet with them and, and work out a schedule, a system. You know, we wanna be good neighbors. We don't wanna cause problems in the community. We have this wherever we are. I mean, kids make noise.
They, they did ask if the students could be moved to the parking lot and I did explain that it wouldn't be safe to have them playing out here in the wrong cars.
Probably not a good idea.
Probably not a good idea.
And our eighty thousand dollar playground is not going to waste.
Other board member comments or questions?
Nope, just excited.
Lining, lining up the next, the next student.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Do we have a public comment on this item? No, seeing none. Okay, I think we're gonna move on to the next item then. Ms. McDonald, I think we have another item in front of you.